Good afternoon. It is such an honor to be with you all. My name's Chelsea Byers and we're here to discuss the power of voting. Before we dig into this all-important topic, I want to first just thank Nancy and Amy and all the Passionistas team for this honor of being a part of this amazing community. I think everybody who's been a part of this space is somebody who feels the sense of their power and is looking for ways to connect more deeply with that power, to build community so that we can evolve that power into a collective feeling of power and that we can ultimately scale our sense of impact in the world. So I just want to honor all of you for making that commitment. It's tremendous. You're truly all people who make the world a better place just by being yourselves. It's purely enough just being who you are. Every single day is making the world a better and different place. So I thank you all for that and I hope that at the end of the time that we shared together today, you can feel an even greater sense of understanding and connection to your personal power and how you can exercise that in the world. While the topic of this conversation is about the power of voting, I'm going to make sure that we think about civic engagement in a really broad spectrum and understand why voting is one of the very most powerful things that we can do to advance our society in the moments that we are given that opportunity. But I will contextualize this in a really broad space of social movement work and how we as people contribute to the history of moving us and our society forward. So I'm really excited to spend this time with you all. And I'm gonna start by just sort of entering this conversation through my own personal story. I think in order to really get into this conversation, I need to get into my background, my own lived experience and my life's work to really offer a perspective that I believe is valuable to you when we're having this conversation. So again, just sit back. We've got about 58 minutes together and I'm so grateful. My name's Chelsea Byers. I am many things, but I will start with some of my early beginnings. I am a woman and a girl who was born in Arizona in the United States of America. I was born to a family that is from many places across the country. My mom is somebody whose family traveled all throughout the United States through between the 60s and 70s and were peace advocates. They contributed to the Social Movement for Peace anti-war work in many different forms and she grew up in many different communities as a child. Ultimately, she landed in Arizona, in Tucson, Arizona. And throughout the early parts of her life, she experienced many different things, including some pretty egregious acts of domestic violence, which forced her out of her community of Tucson, Arizona, where her family and most deepest connections were at that time, into Tempe, Arizona, just a few hours north, where she moved in after fleeing from a domestic violence abuser to the home that my eventual father was living in. He became a roommate and eventually her lover and husband now of almost 40 years. And they built a beautiful life for my family in Mesa, Arizona. My dad is tremendous. He's the most hardworking person I've ever encountered in my life. He grew up in the desert of Phoenix, Arizona and never really left Arizona. It's a place that he's always been and always known. When he was 16, he began working in construction, specifically doing tile work and became a professional artisan designing and, you know, customized floors for people as they were having their dreams home-built all throughout Arizona. Him and my mom got together. He continued to work in construction. My mom supported him in developing a business that they would eventually run and then some years later lose, get into some of those hardships. But early on in their life and me coming into their life really early on into this family that had some tragedies, some traumas, some difficulties and a lot of underlying economic instability really. This was sort of the framework that I grew up in. I didn't have healthcare, having my dad working in construction in Arizona, which is not a state that supports workers with unions or labor movements. We don't have that sort of strong apparatus there. So I was a kid who grew up in Arizona without healthcare and had exposure to the lived experience of trauma because of my mom's life. These experiences and having a deep understanding of what sort of turbulence could look like thrust me into community work from a really early age. I had this sense of knowing that people needed help and support. People, you know, would want to do great things in the world if there weren't barriers that they were experiencing in their own life. And so at a really early age, I knew that I wanted to help people. I was that kid who was always in the kitchen during parties, asking if I could help. I really saw that as sort of my value in the world, right? Providing help and support to people. It put me into a life of being a super volunteer from a very early age. I always looked to opportunities to support my community, to get engaged in volunteer actions. My mom had to drive me all across Phoenix, Arizona to find these volunteer opportunities. She was really supportive of me for that. This work evolved as it does. I got more engaged in my high school clubs and organizations, you know, yearbook, student council. I continued to engage in volunteerism all throughout high school as well. And this put me on a path towards thinking about other people's lives and experiences, not just my own family's hardship, the things that we were lacking, but the things that other people were experiencing, you know, what challenges were they facing? And how could I, as somebody who's very committed to helping people, how could I help alleviate some of that burden that people were feeling? I always had that deep sense of understanding and wanting to connect with people on that level. In high school, I went to a public high school in Mesa, Arizona, but it was a very conservative sort of orientation. Most students at school were religious and that wasn't an experience I grew up with. Although my household was very open and very, you know, welcoming to allow me to go to different church activities and get to know other people's perspectives. That wasn't ever something that my family, we didn't have an orientation towards faith. And so when religion became a bigger part of my sort of social understanding, I became really ostracized and just sort of recognized the ways that I was different from my peers. And that became a very clear moment for me, a defining moment in fact, of my personal advocacy and activism, when a teacher said in a classroom that being gay didn't amount to anything in the world, that you would, it was harmful toward your well-being in fact, if you were an LGBT individual. As somebody who was finding my own sense of connection to my own queerness and certainly knew other students, my peers, who were coming out at that time, who are vocalizing their own sense of identity and, you know, coming out of the closet, calling themselves gay or queer. This injustice that I saw in my classroom with this teacher, you know, this trusted voice of authority in my classroom, who was saying such horrible things about people's long-term lives and trajectory, I couldn't take it. As somebody who knew that barriers were presented that made people's lives more difficult, I immediately saw her as a barrier to people's ability to feel safe and connected and welcomed to the community of our high school campus. And at that point, you know, as somebody in student council and in yearbook and in all these different places in campus, I knew that it was my role, that I could do something about this to help make people feel safe. So I came back to that class the next day. I wore a T-shirt that said, "Love us for who we are, not who we love." I protested in class along with a couple of other students, but I was the one who was sent to the principal's office and told I was not welcome to come back into this class. I had a choice that I could make. I could apologize for what I did or I could choose not to graduate from high school with that Spanish credit that I so wanted. So I made the choice. I didn't graduate high school with my Spanish credits. And instead, I really put myself on this path of calling out confronting injustice, creating community for people who didn't feel like they had that sense of safety and security and inclusion in spaces and of skilling myself up to be more effective in all of these ways. So at high school, I knew then that I had a few choices to make. I was deciding where I wanted to go to college. I was deciding, you know, what my future looked like. And I applied to one school in the entire world and it happened to be located in Switzerland, of all places. My family thought I was applying to our state schools. There were a few of them and I didn't apply to any. I took my single shot in the world and I made it happen. I took out a huge student loan in order to go to college in the first place. I was the first person in my family to be able to make this decision to go to college. And I knew exactly what I was going to do with it. I wanted to make as big of an impact in the world as I possibly could. I was, you know, just sort of on fire with this feeling of potential, of my own power, of having made an impact in a serious way on my campus in a place that didn't have resources for LGBT community. I became and was able to create space for safety for this community. And I was not gonna let that feeling of power and influence and ability go. I needed to nourish it and to foster it more deeply. And so throwing myself out into the world and going to the school in Switzerland that had amazing opportunity to get connected to international programs, you know, we traveled and went to amazing organizations that support people around the world and I got to see firsthand this, you know, life of, you know, bigger community. It was an amazing experience, so enriching and helped me sort of scale my own sense of impact, right? At 18 years old, I'm traveling the world. I'm seeing my footprint, you know, land in different communities, places I never thought I'd be able to go. And I was really proud to be able to do that for myself. I knew that I wanted to continue to make impact, that the issues that I faced early on in my life were gonna continue to follow me, student loan debt, especially having an awareness of just sort of the monstrosity that this debt would be for the rest of my life. I wanted to make sure that I was also really rooting myself in opportunities to get connected to jobs and to a career in places that made sense. I eventually transferred back to a state school in Arizona, Northern Arizona University. And it was at that point in time that I was able to get connected to different issue organizing that was happening. While I was living in Switzerland, I got very involved in the work of registering students to vote. It was the 2008 election happening and as a, you know, young person from Arizona, we had one of our own, you know, state-elected officials in that election. So it was a very exciting time to be from Arizona because, you know, everybody in the world sort of knew what Arizona was. Senator John McCain was one of the presidential candidates and he was facing a young and upcoming, you know, political opponent from Chicago, Illinois and president, you know, eventually President Obama. And it was really exhilarating to get to be living in a foreign country, registering, you know, all the Americans there to vote, to get their absentee ballots and engage in that election. And that just made me feel a whole new sense of connection to US politics and our potential here. So going back to my state school in Arizona, I knew I wanted to dig into these issues for the long haul. I wanted to get engaged in the work of bettering our country and our communities locally. And I got really excited about that. Being in Arizona also presented me with opportunities to work on education. We were the 49th worst state when it came to education. And here I was, somebody already saddled with tremendous student loan debt and I was seeing the barriers that my brother, my younger brother was experiencing when he was making a decision if he wanted to go to school or not. He decided not to go to college. He works with my dad still to this day, tiling floors throughout Arizona in the heat of the desert sun. And it's tremendous, beautiful work that they do, but he didn't truly have a choice. His choice was to either take on tremendous student loan debt as I did or, you know, pursue a career barely early on without going to college. I didn't want people to have to face that same set of tough choices. I wanted people to feel like they could access an education if that's something they wanted to do without having to take on the student loan debt. So it was really important to me to help reduce those barriers. And I got involved in an organization called Arizona Students Association that helped bring students into the political space. We did work like voter registration, like education and mobilization around specific issues like Pell Grants on campus, which were a federal grant program that extended to students who needed help getting access to resources to go to college. We did expansion of the Pell Grant program. We also did things like a tuition freeze when our Board of Regents, the decision-making body for education, would make decisions like increasing the rate of tuition. We would run campaigns to try to stop that. So we did a lot of amazing work throughout those years as a student organization and I'm really proud of that. And it's in that space of time that I really began to understand the power of voting. I had, you know, mentioned, I was doing some of this registration work already when I was living in Switzerland. Even in high school, I was registering students to vote who were just about to turn 18 and getting them all ready for their opportunity to engage in elections. But it wasn't until I was back in Arizona, working on a college campus and really making voter registration, you know, the focus of my day in and day out, that I began to understand and feel the sense of understanding of the power of voting. So what I saw there was tremendous and I just want to slow it down a little bit to explain because I feel really fortunate to live in the state I do now of California, where some of these barriers don't exist. But we hear so often this voter suppression that's happening, right, all across the country. And even in democracies around the world, you know, it's not just a guarantee that people get to access the ballot box. It is still something that we are truly fighting for. And you would feel like that's contrary to this very value of democracy that, well, a democracy functions because people participate and you have to allow people participate in order for it to function. In Arizona, what we saw was really egregious acts of disenfranchisement, right? These very intentional efforts to keep people away from accessing their power of voting. And when I saw it on this micro level around the student population, I knew that I was going to be committed to reducing barriers in a whole new way for the rest of my life. And some of the things that we saw while we were registering voters on campus, we knew that it was of course easier for somebody to vote if they got their ballot sent directly to their mailbox. That's a given. It's in fact why the state of California and a few other states like Colorado are not going back from that decision that was made during the pandemic during COVID, when we wanted to expand access to voting in this sort of state of hyper-health consciousness because of COVID. So ballots were mailed to every single registered voter in the state of California and Colorado. States had the opportunity to make that choice and only, you know, the most progressive states truly did. So it's tremendous that we can do that. We know if you have your ballot mailed to you, you're gonna have an opportunity to take the time to vote on every single line. And sometimes these ballots are really thick, right? There's so many different names and issues and ballot initiatives. So giving people the time to do their homework, to, you know, research the different things that come up on their ballot, that can happen if we get these ballots mailed to their home. But often the problem was that we weren't able to get students to register, to get their ballots mailed to them because they would need things like a campus mailbox address that they didn't have. They would need things like an ID that didn't match their new address on campus. So we saw this time and time again. We, just the very identification piece of the puzzle, you needed a brand-new driver's license. Any student was gonna be expected to have to get a brand-new driver's license or state ID that matched their campus address. You're allowed to vote at whatever is your permanent residence during the election, but now all of a sudden Arizona said you have to have a matching ID. And that's a whole different process to engage in, just to engage people in the act of voting. So despite, you know, something I'm very proud of, which is the fact that our campus was able to register the highest percentage of students in history that our campus has ever seen, we only saw about 1% of student population actually vote in that election. This is tragic. It's really challenging and frustrating to think about the fact that all of this work, all of this energy and dedication is put in to ensuring that, you know, voices who are absolutely affected by the decisions we make, right? They are able to help contribute to those decisions, but instead they're undermined. They're taking away the opportunity to vote. These barriers are put into their, in place that are so insurmountable that in fact they cause a detriment to people's feeling of connection toward civic engagement for the long haul. If you can get people to vote when you're 18, then they're likely to continue to vote for the rest of their life because they felt that sense of connection to this act from a very early age. It becomes sort of more formidable in their mind and in their makeup. But if the opposite happens, if you give people a feeling like they're gonna be able to get engaged, but then that feeling gets taken away or undermined by something more egregious, like this blatant act of disenfranchisement, then that's what's gonna get remembered. And not everybody is going to feel as frustrated or infuriated or, you know, just frankly angry by that and make it their goal to overcome that the next cycle. Some people just throw their hands up and say, "Forget it," altogether. So in seeing that happen and watching, you know, potentially such a generation of my peers lost to this, I knew that I was going to be committed to this work for the rest of my life, that there was just no way. We did so much to get so many students engaged, just to watch them get turned away on voting day. It was absolutely gutting and heartbreaking. I knew that my vote mattered all the more because my peers were unable to. I knew that when I sat there and made my decisions on the ballot, that I was doing this on behalf of people who couldn't make their voices heard. It was an act of solidarity for me. All of a sudden, when I'm sitting there at this ballot, this act that feels very personal, right? Nobody even actually sees who you vote for. There's nowhere that that vote is recorded. Nobody can look up, you know, who did Chelsea Byers vote for in the 2008 election. You can't see that information. But I knew when I was making those decisions, that I was making those decisions on behalf of a much larger feeling of solidarity, a bigger community of people who needed me to make these decisions, right? And so I say that when I talk about the power of voting, that we have to remember that this is something that we're doing for people who can't do this for themselves. I wish and we have to continue to work to ensure that everybody can access the ballot box. And there are people who are not able to do that legally for so many reasons, right? People who are under the age of 18 and most communities cannot vote. Here in California, where I live, in a neighboring community, not my own city, but another city, they're working right now to pass a ballot initiative that would allow 16-year-olds to vote. I think these are tremendous ideas, knowing that if you're 16, you're still likely living in your family's home. You're in high school. And if you have an opportunity to get engaged in an election two years earlier than you would have, in that context of being in your family's home and the community you grew up in in high school, then you're going to crystallize that connection to voting in a whole different way than you would if you're at this sort of transitional point in your life at 18 years old, right? You're leaving the community like you grew up in, you know, you're maybe moving outside of your family's home for the first time and all of a sudden it's fall and there's an election and you're supposed to have a deep understanding of what's going on in your new local community. 16 is a very wise time to start getting people on this track, but that's not happening everywhere. So when you're showing up at a ballot box and you have the opportunity to vote, you have to remember that there's an entire generation under the age of 18 that cannot do that. And frankly, they are relying on us to make good decisions for the future, right? Think about climate change and how many years we wasted not making the right decision happen at election time for the benefit of climate change. And now we have an entire generation of young people, Generation Z, who is truly, you know, traumatized and deeply anxious because of the realities of climate change. I think about this constantly. I'm 32 years old. I'll be very transparent with that. And even as a 32-year-old, I think about climate change every single day and how many missed opportunities generations before us had to make a difference. Generation Z is absolutely anxious around this reality. It's, you know, sort of an imperative in some ways for their ability to really get connected as young people. And what we need to do is make sure that we're recognizing our opportunities to act in solidarity at the ballot box with these generations of people. Beyond young people, we know that people who are formerly incarcerated, right? If you have a felony in most states, you are not able to vote. Given the state of law enforcement, of policing, of these issues in our community, knowing the history of how policing and law enforcement and criminalization has worked to truly marginalize and disenfranchise specific communities throughout the United States, namely Black and Brown communities and specifically men, this has been really detrimental towards the power building for these communities, right? We would think about these issues in so many different ways if these voices were able to actually exercise their power of voting. Instead, they're intentionally marginalized. They're taken away, stripped of their right to vote in our democracy. So we need to think about those voices and the choices that we make on our ballot. Sometimes communities got the opportunity to pass ballot initiatives, like I just mentioned, in Culver City, California, to allow for more people to engage in voting, right? 16-year-olds may be able to vote there soon. Legislation in Virginia in two election cycles before this was passing to allow former felons to the opportunity to vote. These are tremendous strides to bring new voices into the conversation. And the people we elect, when we actually get to vote, often have the opportunity to make those decisions too. So this is all so connected. The power of voting expands in so many different directions and I want to center these realities because it's important that we think about that. Because voting can frankly become a very casual act, right? It's, you know, we have, again, so many names on a ballot, so many different times throughout the year we're expected to engage in elections. Sometimes it gets challenging and overwhelming. But I think if we thought about all the communities who didn't have this power, who because they don't have this power, often get robbed of their rights. They get denied access to the things that they need the most, the resources, the public, you know, the funding, all of these things. Those are things that we should wear proudly on our shoulder as responsibilities and think about them. We think about our own power to access voting. So I mentioned that in addition to the power of voting, I wanted to sort of think about this in the context of social movements broadly. And I say that because sometimes, and I think especially given the state of many of the issues that we're talking about in the world, climate change, right? Criminalization, law enforcement, policing at large, sexual violence, something I've worked on very deeply in my life. I worked to overturn legislation here in the state of California to abolish the statute of limitations on rape and sexual assault, this 10-year time limit that existed in the state of California. It's a very arbitrary timeline to be able to report a crime as serious as rape that happened to you. That is an arbitrary timeline that still exists in 37 other states, but never actually got implemented in some states, like my home state, Arizona, never had one of these laws preventing survivors of crime from engaging in the criminal justice system to report their crimes and, you know, pursue justice of some sort. This law was able to be overturned in California, but the fact that it was implemented in the first place is deeply in connection to who we vote into office, right? So these acts, these campaigns that can be engaged in outside of the realms of voting, it's all connects back to who is in those decision-making seats, right? And although some of this work, like ending a law, like statute of limitations on rape, it doesn't happen at the ballot. No voter is saying yes or no to that decision. They're electing the people who will make those decisions. And so it's really important that when you think about the power of voting, you're thinking about the opportunities we have to further the issues we care about most in the world because of the representation that we're putting into place to make those decisions. And too often, and we know this throughout history, it's very obvious when you flip through a history book and you see, you know, who has held elected office. It's a lot of the same people and same, meaning people who represent the same demographics, right? Like middle-aged or older, typically white, typically male, typically wealthy people. People who have had familial, like, you know, people in their family have had access to these places for some time. And so it's been an easy foot in the door for the next generation to come in and to take these positions of power. Those are all realities that we see, right? Some of the people have been deeply entrenched in their communities for a very long time because again, their family connections or things like that. All of those things create a really warped representation for us in this reality of democracy. And this is what we have to overcome. And that's the power of voting, once again, our ability to transform the decision-making power in our country that allows us to move more of our issues to the forefront and accelerate our ability to create progress on those issues. So it's extremely important that we see, no matter what the issue that we care most about in the world is, that there is likely some way voting is going to make a difference on it. Now, there's a challenge with this because elections don't come once a month. They don't come, you know, every year even. We have elections every two years and most elected officials don't even see an election every two years. It's, you know, maybe every four years. If you're a senator in the United States of America, it's every six years. So a lot of people, you know, we get to see or kind of get introduced to as a candidate in a very short period of time. And then an election happens. Maybe they get into office, maybe they don't. But if they do, then they're gonna hold that seat of power for some time. And our ability to make any movement happen really has to go through that individual. So it's extremely important that we, you know, in addition to thinking about your opportunity to take your pen and mark on your ballot who you want to vote for, you know, one or the other choice, that you engage before that, right? You have the opportunity to shape who is getting the opportunity to be voted on. I was somebody who helped recruit people to run for office. I think it's really important that we do that work as well. And if you are somebody who works in an organization or you're really dedicated to specific issues, then I think it's really important that we make space for candidate recruitment as part of that work, right? We can create greater representation when we find people who we want to represent us and provide them with the early support, with the encouragement, with the motivation and frankly, with the resources to get out there and to run for office. It's a really hard thing. And like I said, history And like I said, history shows that it takes really well positioned, well connected and well resourced people to get there. There's so much of that changing because now we are well motivated, well intentioned people who are fighting for our lives, frankly. And no matter how well resourced or well positioned, you know, other people may be for this, we're fighting for something bigger. And it's truly our lives and our future on the line. So I think we have a new context created that allows us to bring people to the forefront. That can speak to these issues that are connected through lived experience to these issues and motivate them to run. So when I think about the power of voting, I think about it from the very beginning of that whole process. This isn't about waiting until the election day and getting your ballot and getting the job done, patting yourself on the back and moving on. You absolutely need to do that. But if you're thinking of the power of voting, you have to think about it in this bigger space, right? There are so many different issues that influence the outcome of elections, the amount of money candidates raise, the amount of support. They get from different community organizations. All of these things matter, right? The issues that they're talking about that are coming up in their community. Are you somebody who's running in reaction to the hot button issues of the moment? Or are you somebody who's deeply entrenched in where your community needs to go and you're able to actually, you know, instead of being a thermometer and reading the temperature of the room? You're the type of leader that can come in and set the temperature, right? That's how I think about the difference between some candidates that we can get. And we want somebody, um, and I think our our the times demand that we have somebody who has a vision for what type of future we need to be living in. And can articulate our path to get there, who can build bridges and bring people on board. All of that's very necessary. Cause we have somewhere we really need to get and we need our leaders to be able to help us clear the path to get there. And it's our job as community who's deeply connected to these issues, who understands what our communities need. Who know what type of leaders will be well representing us. We need to do that work very early on to find those leaders, to encourage them, to support them. And to get them in a position where they can be voted on. That's extremely important. And now, taking a step even further back, um, back to the place that I sort of began when it came to issues. When it came to the work I was doing in Arizona, working on education, um, uh, I think about the fact that issues. Are not often something that you have an opportunity to really vote on. Sometimes you do. Sometimes we have an opportunity to, you know, maybe pass the sales tax increase because education needs more funding. Or homelessness needs more funding. Um, we have an opportunity to, you know, at the ballot box. Vote on something that can make a tremendous difference, but still it's an ongoing issue, right? Implementing that funding is going to take oversight commissions and more decision making bodies and all of these sort of different processes along the way. So even if you get the opportunity to vote for your issue in some way. The issue is still sort of ever present in community. I call that issue based organizing or community organizing. And when it comes to this piece of the social movement puzzle, I think that work is ever present and ever ongoing, really. That's the work of a social movement, right? We think about labor and the work of unions, right? And all they do for working people and working families, making sure that there are high wages and strong working conditions. And strong labor protection so that working people are not exploited or dealing with wage theft, right? That they're not suffering, um, and unsafe working conditions, like two hot factories, like, you know, Amazon. There's so many different things that workers are striving to name and call out about the conditions. People want to work, they want to do good work, but they should also be allowed to dictate the conditions of those meetings. And too often they're not able to. I, and that is an extremely important piece of work. Um, that we have to be able to think about in connection, but it's ongoing, it's ever present. So when we think about social movements and the twenty four seven around the clock work that they do. How do we think about elections in relationship to that? I think that's sometimes challenging for people, right? And sometimes often why you get to hear or you'll hear people antagonize voting as a viable pathway towards making change. Cause there's this deeper feeling that people have of the work is ongoing, that you can't just show up in November. That's not enough. You have to stay with this work for the long haul. And so I don't want anybody to feel like, oh, your vote doesn't matter. It's not important. It's just not the only thing that you can think about. It's absolutely one of the most important things you can do to quickly accelerate change across the board. But because the work is ever present and ongoing, it's important for us to not minimize that always, that the work that's always happening. And I think that's sort of the tension that we experience, right? Um, I, you know, social movements are happening. The movement is always going on. And voting presents a moment within that movement to create mass transformation and acceleration. So if you can think about those two things always happening, movements, a social movement, like, you know, the work I was a part of for education in Arizona. It was really important to us that as part of our ongoing work, engaging in passing legislation, uh, in the state legislature. Bring, you know, educating people across the state about why education is so important and why we need to make sure it is well funded and well supported. We also wanted to make sure that we were recruiting leaders and that we are engaging people in elections. And that's why we registered students to vote, because if we weren't creating movement at the ballot box, then our movement long term. Is going to fall apart. We will never see the elected leadership that we need, that's able to make decisions in the legislature. And continue this cycle going on. So without, you know, an amazing whiteboard behind me to draw out this visual. I hope you can kind of see that sense of connection to these issues and get a greater sense of feeling towards that. It's really important. I think because if you're somebody who is trying to deeply connect with and harness the power of voting for yourself. Then I believe you're somebody who wants to walk away from this conference or the summit. Um, and take all of the things that you learned and really put them into effect. And I would hate for you to think or, you know, I think I would be remiss if you only thought there was one opportunity to do that every couple of years. And that's just not the case, right? There are so many ways that you can affect change and I hope that as somebody who cares deeply about issues, whether it's, um, women's rights. Whether it's, you know, child, uh, protecting kids and keeping kids safe in our communities, whether it's, you know, resolving our unhoused crisis. And helping make sure that this, you know, things that are happening for, um, our unhoused neighbors are are handled differently. Um, if it's things like Black Lives Matter and and supporting a transformation around our law enforcement space. There are tremendous ways you can make a massive impact on those issues when it comes to voting. And that's only as good as our ability to continue the work around the clock. I want to say another important piece of this whole representation puzzle because, um, I know that, uh, I I mentioned the work of solidarity. And what it means to sort of think about communities beyond yourself when you vote. Um, it's really important to me to do that. I just want to bring in one other dynamic of that in. Um, and that's when we're thinking about voting in general and sort of who's being listened to in community or not. I want to make sure that, um, I'm holding or imagining that at this big table of decision makers, right? We know the metaphor, pull up a seat to the table. If you don't like what's happening there, you know, just pull up a seat. Um, I want to make sure that there's always an open seat at that table that is held to represent the voices who will not be there. Again, I mentioned people who are under the age of eighteen, who don't yet have the opportunity to vote. People who are felons, who are denied of their right to vote because of something that's happened to them. Um, I think about also in that bucket, people who aren't yet born, who are eventually going to be community members in our neighborhoods, right? I also think about people who don't yet live here because maybe they live somewhere else. But right after the election, they're going to move into our estate, just like I did, right after Arizona's twenty fourteen midterm election. I packed up a U-Haul with my partner and we moved to Los Angeles. If Los Angeles wasn't thinking about how to make space for people who are going to come here, then we're in big trouble, right? So we always need to make sure that we have leadership that is thinking about that dynamic too. And it's really hard because they're not yet constituents, but how else do we march ourselves into the future if we're not holding open space for community who's not yet here? So, um, just wanted to say that and I see this question now, I'm going to read it out loud, um, from the audience. Sometimes it's intimidating to get involved in local politics or political campaign. What advice do you have for someone who wants to get more involved? This is such a great question. I'm so happy you asked it. For me, the way I got involved always was through the issues. Um, growing up in Arizona, knowing that there was a really stark contrast between people who are running for office. You know, it was very much people who supported women's rights or was going to work to undermine them and pass really egregious laws on reproductive rights. Um, you know, it was people who supported gun control laws or people who had a gun on their hip when they went to work at the state legislature. I'm not kidding, it happened. Um, it was very stark contrast. So for me, I followed the trail. If there was an issue I cared about and, you know, in my early days, um, education was that. I followed the trail. I was trying to find which candidates were talking the most about education. Cause it was an issue area that I knew very deeply, so I felt like I could have personal influence and and provide an extra level of value or support. Um, and I could just resonate with the experience that this candidate was going through, you know, all the battles that they were going to face in community. I felt like those were my battles too, and I really wanted to support a strong champion for those issues. Um, increasingly LGBTQ rights in Arizona became a really big thing for me. I wanted to make sure I was supporting candidates who are fearless, especially at that time. You know, it was before we had a president who was willing to talk about, um, that it was okay to be gay and that we wanted to pass, um, uh, marriage equality in the country, right? So I wanted to find the bullthest people I could in Arizona who are already talking about this. That's some of my advice is when you find the thing that gets your heart on fire, that, you know, makes you come alive and helps you think about how the world could be so better. If this one thing was different, you're going to want to find the candidates who are working on that. Because then I believe you're going to work really hard for those candidates. And look, uh, local politics, elections, campaigning, it can be nasty. It can be very challenging work. And I don't think that should be shocking to anybody, especially if we're in a women's, you know, feminist space. If we're thinking about the power that we're all trying to harness for ourselves, the things that we care about in the world. Um, this shouldn't be, you know, a shock to anybody. I certainly hope it's not. That campaigning can get really nasty and especially after what we've seen in politics in the last six years. You know, at the local level, I'm pretty astounded frankly, to see just how bad it is. Look, I know as a thirty two year old, I'm going to face misogyny. I'm going to face some pretty crazy, uh, statements coming my direction. But the extent of what I've seen is nothing like I've ever seen before. Um, and I've worked to, you know, get women involved in politics for a really long time. So, um, it's pretty astounding and I just want to say, prepare yourself. But I think in order to really prepare yourself, you need to be really connected to the thing that keeps you moving forward, no matter what. That thing that makes you feel unstoppable, truly. Um, and then you can find your candidate, uh, and and get to work. The way I think you can do some of that, look to organizations and who they're supporting, right? A lot of great issue based organizations actually have the ability to support candidates. And sometimes they'll actually be able to make endorsements. Maybe they have a, a part of their organization that has the legal authority to make political endorsements. And, you know, support and candidates. So those are trails you can follow to find candidates that you're interested in. Um, a lot of organizations that have the legal restrictions from being able to support candidates. Have, uh, the ability to educate community on which candidates are good on their issues or bad. Um, sometimes you'll see like a scorecard, a legislative scorecard, um, Planned Parenthood tends to put some of these things out. So you can say, okay, um, they're really good on reproductive rights and, oh, they're really bad. So it can give you, you know, another trail to follow and find the person that you want to work for. Um, and I'd say, you know, the other thing is be willing to try new things, right? Um, there are tried and true models that work. It's just the art of political engagement or the art of civic engagement. Um, and I say the art because it has to be seen as that way. It's a discipline, right? There's things that are are tried and true and just work. And as frustrating as they can be to have to go through and, you know, keep banging your head against some of these same walls. Eventually they actually work. Um, so things like canvassing, right? Like knocking the door of a stranger in your community and saying, hey, do you have a few seconds to talk about the upcoming election? It's, you know, education is really important to me and that's why I'm out here supporting this candidate. Just wanted to talk to you about it. Putting yourself out there and, you know, making those vulnerable connections with new folks is one of the most powerful tools you can do. And I think so many times people hear, oh, I, you know, supporting this candidate means I have to go knock doors of strangers in my community. Or I need to spend all day making phone calls and that doesn't feel like something that's comfortable or exciting for us too often. But I'm really encouraging you all to shake that off, um, truly. I think there's so many missed opportunities that come from us not wanting to put ourselves out there. And you don't have to be an extrovert to do any of this, really. You just have to be someone who really cares about your issue and wants to take a few minutes to talk about it. Um, so that's one thing you can do is help knock doors in your community, make phone calls. Um, campaigns have the ability to help you do all this remotely too, so you can get it set up. Um, I see this note too from Lisa. Hi Lisa. Um, Lisa says she's an older, somewhat disabled person with no transportation. I also, I don't have a vehicle, so no transportation is very much the category I fall into. Um, besides making phone calls, what can someone like me do to get involved with the vote and other issues? Great question. So beyond making phone calls, um, campaigns are also increasingly engaging in this thing called postcarding. Um, some people really like to take their time and, you know, decorate, put stickers and make a really fun postcard designs. But this work of postcarding is also really valuable. Um, really, if you think about what we're trying to do, it's connect a message that a candidate has with an audience that needs to hear it. And that audience is specifically somebody who is registered to vote in their district, right? So the things that work are reaching them directly, knocking them at the, knocking their door. Get phone, like calling their phone, texting their phone, putting a piece of mail in their mailbox, right? All of that absolutely makes a difference. And if you can think about one or two ways that you're willing to to put some time or energy into doing those tasks, that's huge. Beyond that, you can support the work of organizations who are supporting candidates. Organizations maybe have a ton of different ways that you can support that work, right? Maybe there's events, maybe there are, um, there are social media actions that you can take. Maybe, uh, maybe just financial contribution. I didn't mention that, but financial contribution is huge. And I know everybody feels like we don't have enough money to give to candidates to make a real impact. But I tell you what, five dollars makes a huge impact to me because just as important as raising a huge amount of money is. I want to see that I have a lot of support in general. So, you know, one person giving me a hundred dollars or a hundred people giving me five dollars. Um, I would take the hundred people giving me five dollars, not just because the math works out better, because it shows that a hundred people are with me. Not just one wealthy individual, right? So I always think you have power in your pocketbook, no matter what your financial status is. And if you can, you know, anticipate that an election cycle is coming up, like I knew twenty twenty two, I was going to be spending some of my personal resources on candidates. Who I wanted to support and it's not a lot, but you know, twenty dollars here, fifty dollars there. Um, I put a budget together for myself coming into this election cycle, so I could keep track and keep myself honest. So I didn't feel like I was really straining myself, but I was giving in all the ways I can. I encourage you to think about your next election cycle budget. Um, and and really, you know, put aside some dollars that you want to commit to candidates that you find or get to meet throughout the campaign and support them that way. There's something really valuable, um, that comes from your feeling of being able to give that way and support. And I think we often feel like it's sort of, you know, well, the other side is going to have more resources than us. Don't think of it that way. People can get really creative with a small amount of money. And honestly, it just fuels you. It gives you so much energy to feel those dollars, those resources coming in. And we just need to keep our candidates going to do their hard work. I think we often have the winning message, um, and just a little bit more resources helps get that winning message out to a broader audience. So, um, beyond that, I'm somebody who's a very creative type. I think that some of the most, um, exciting things I see happen throughout elections are things that people just do because of their own passion and creativity. Um, you see people drop, you know, sheets with the name of their can- preferred candidates. Vote for, you know, vote for Nancy and Amy, um, and people drop these sheets over their balconies at their apartment buildings. Or, you know, put their own homemade window signs in the back of a vehicle, um, or decorate the front of their building, you know, those things matter. Letting people know that you have a passion and that you're willing to put your time and energy into doing something for this candidate. That energy spreads, it truly is contagious. And, um, I would hope or encourage you to think creatively about the different things you might be able to do. You know, a postcard night with your friends, getting, you know, making a a great meal, having people come around a table, spend some time writing postcards. More than not, campaigns have those resources and are willing to get them out to you. You just need to ask them for them. Um, and if they don't, then this is something you can take on yourself. People are always well, um, excited to sort of do that and see what other opportunities you have. So, um, I would say get creative, have a lot of fun with it. Um, and even just sending a message of positivity to the campaigns that you are supportive of, that can go a long way. Um, I I know that I see a lot of negative messages and every single positive message I I get. Feels ten times as important as those negative messages do. So truly, it, you know, it's, it's not, it's not nothing. It really does mean a lot just to take the time to go on social media. And, you know, give your thumbs up to different candidates and say you're, you're, you're kicking ass, like all that goes such a long way. So I hope you feel encouraged to do some of that. Um, I see another audience question, sometimes it's exhausting, yes it is, to keep up our energy to fight for all of these causes. Do you have any advice for how to pace yourself for long term political activism? Yes, let me take a drink. That's part of pacing yourself. Yes, I do have advice. Listen, burnout is absolutely, um, a part of the reality of being in these spaces. It happens. I think people get burnt out, you know, when you've made too many dinners for your family or yourself all week. And you're like, I just earned myself takeout, you know, like burnout comes through repetitive, uh, repeated or repeated, um, activity. activity, repeated engagement with something. And we do need to do our very best to avoid it. Um, we also should know that it can happen, no matter how hard you work to avoid it. So I just say that because, you know, don't be afraid if you get that feeling of burnout, you will come back, right? Your light will come alive again. I don't think that anybody fully gets extinguished from this work. It just feels like you need to take a real step back. Now, you're always wanting to avoid that need, um, but just be in real, you know, be real, like, it may happen. You may need to take a step back and there's no shame from any of that. In fact, if you know that it's happening, then you're able to actually pass your baton off and let other people keep going and that's a good thing, right? I think everybody just wants to feel like you're not slowing anything down. So we're always trying to say, how do I avoid feeling this way? But the reality is you might and you just may need to take a step back. Some of the things I do when I'm starting to feel close to that burnout, first of all, you need to just have a good awareness of yourself, right? I think if you're engaging in the work of caring for other people in the world, you have to have a good sense of knowing how to care for yourself first. It's like what they say in airplanes, right? You have to be able to put your own oxygen mask on before you help somebody else, cause you're able to help more people if you're well-taken care of. So make sure you're taking care of yourself first and foremost. Model good behavior in that way. If you're, you know, somebody who's just working your butt off in a campaign office all day and you didn't take time to eat lunch and by three o'clock in the afternoon, you're the crankiest one in the office, like, nobody appreciates that. You really need to make sure you're taking the time to take care of yourself and make sure you're well, so you can show up and keep the work going. Um, also know that it's not your job to save the world. Like, I wish somebody would have helped me and maybe they did and maybe I just need to keep hearing it. But hearing that is a really hard thing for a lot of us, right? We take so much onto our shoulders and we often look around us and think, well, if nobody else is doing it, I have to, right? Cause nobody else is doing it. That's just also not the truth, right? The wheel's gonna keep moving forward with or without us. And it's often a sense of our own mortality that we're putting into check, this feeling that the world is gonna go on without us one day. So we need to let go of that feeling that we are the ones that have to hold on to the sense of control and you have to be there to see everything move forward, like, take a day off. Know that the campaign's gonna be okay without you for a day and they're gonna be joyful when you come back into the space. That's a really cool thing for everybody. Um, so finding that space where you're just comfortable owning who you are and what your needs are is very, very valuable. And then ultimately, like, you know, taking the days to unplug, not letting the news cycle drag you down, like, all of that's really necessary and it's truly okay. Um, everybody wants to feel like we're doing our absolute most at all times, but I think you're actually doing more when you're doing less and you're just doing it very well and authentically for yourselves. We've all been extremely exacerbated. I've heard more, you know, somebody who got involved in politics in two thousand and six, for, you know, ten years before the onset of two thousand and sixteen, I hear so many people who said, I've been in this since two thousand and sixteen and I haven't stopped. And I'm really concerned for those folks, cause I think that cycle of burnout's gonna come and be really impactful for them. Um, and, and maybe, you know, it'll take them some time to come back into it. So everybody really needs to be able to take care of themselves well in order to do this work for the long haul. And I think finding the thing that you feel, that you can make the most impact on for yourself in positive ways also helps, right? We want that feeling of reciprocity. We want a feeling like the things we're doing in the world are actually moving the needle, right? That they're making a difference. And if you're not seeing that, it can make you feel really worn down, right? Like, you want, if you're throwing spaghetti at the wall all day and nothing's sticking, you gotta kind of change the recipe. Um, it's just a matter of fact, so, um, I hope you can take some of that in and feel a sense of calm and release about your need to be a part of everything. Um, yes, I think, uh, that's a great point, Lisa. You say voting is looked as more of a chore, but we should enjoy it more. It is, it should be a joy. Um, you know, in college, we did a lot of things like getting engaged, uh, with the, the drag queens in the community, right? We had a, a really fun event that we did weeks before the election called Drag 'Em To The Polls. And all the drag queens talked about voting and the power of it. Like, finding events like that, that sort of make light of things, bring in energy, a sense of fun, we should feel a lot of fun with this. Um, I often also say too, it's, it's a principle I follow and live by, that joy is a revolutionary act, right? And if you think about what the, the conservatives of this country are trying to do to us, to strip us of our rights, of our livelihood, of our reproductive rights, of just our feeling of autonomy and freedom, then I think living in joy fiercely, boldly and bravely is one of the most powerful and radical things we can do. So I hope you can find your sense of joy and connection to happiness, because I think it truly actually does change the world. You know, lastly, I think, as they get to a close here at the hour, I can't believe how much this time goes by. I'm always so, oh, there's not gonna be enough, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna have way too much time and I'm gonna be able to get through this so fast. But I feel like I could spend another hour with you all and it's, it's truly, the importance of this cannot be understated. I know that listening and how we listen to each other has been a really big part of the conversation. And look, I think voting, um, civic engagement broadly, the work of social movements, this is all an active response, right? We are listening and hearing the needs that are bubbling up in our community, right? Things like affordable housing, resources for unhoused community members, right? Reforms, um, and, and alternatives to law enforcement and to public safety, um, solutions for survivors and climate change broadly. Like, we hear the calls and the cries for help. And our ability to show up at a ballot is our act of listening and responding to that. Now, that work of listening carries on all throughout the year, right? Again, that work of recruiting candidates, of getting them prepared to talk about the specific issues that are most pressing in community. Uh, the, all of that is an act of response. It's listening and responding. And so I hope you can think about this thing, this idea of being more deeply in connection with each other that starts with hearing and listening to each other. Um, you can see how that extends itself into this work of voting, um, and, and being connected to social movements broadly, that you can feel the power of being connected to community in this way. And that you can go out into the world and we can make tremendous, tremendous impacts at all levels and all the things that we care about. And if we don't have the influence that we wanna see this election cycle, that we keep going, that we keep going. Cause we have to know that we are moving the needle every single day. We show up to make a big difference on these issues. And we will have to spend our whole lives continuing to move the needle, cause this work never stops. And take your step out, take your breath and then come back in and keep doing the work. Um, we need you, I support you and I celebrate you all and I'm just so grateful, um, that you're taking the time to, to be with me and to think about all of this. We are so much more powerful when we do this together and I'm really grateful because you all helped me feel extremely powerful. Thank you everybody for, for being a part of this space today.